...of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
I rethought.
Quiet, please.
Counselor Cameron, number eight.
Counselor Kinsey at large.
Number nine.
Number nine? What are we going?
Counselor Tonton, number eleven.
Counselor Cronin, number twelve.
Counselor Agarwal, number one.
Counselor Vogel, number two.
Counselor Connell, number three.
Counselor Herzog, at five.
City Clerk, number seven.
City Clerk to the roll call for the city council meeting of May 27, 2014.
We have you, Mr. President. Counselor Vogel.
President.
Counselor Cameron.
President.
Counselor Connell.
President.
Counselor Cronin.
President.
Counselor Agarwal.
Here.
Counselor Junta.
President.
Counselor Hartquist is absent. Counselor Herzog.
Here.
Counselor Kinsey.
Here.
Counselor Tonton.
Here.
Counselor President O'Brien.
Yes.
We have a court.
Late file.
There is one late file item, which will always be a late file item. It's the mayor's update, but I think it needs a motion to waive the rules and let it into our agenda.
Motion to waive the rules and accept a late file item. All the paper?
Aye.
Full. Public comment?
Jeffrey.
Thank you. If it bleeds to counsel, I'd like to take a few seconds to talk to you about the impacts of the plastic bag ban that is kind of in conversation with regard to our work at the Salvation Army. My name is Lieutenant Jeffrey Nowell. My wife and I are the directors of our local Salvation Army, which operates the city's largest emergency food pantry. We serve approximately 130 families every month. About 35 to 40 of those families each bunch are new families that haven't come to us to receive assistance before. Each family that comes to us receives groceries to the tune of about 10 meals per person in their household, which amounts to an average of between seven and eight, maybe 10 at the most grocery bags of non-perishable food items per family that comes in. That in combination with our emergency bread, you know, program that we have where people can come in, get day-old bread that's donated from local businesses, means that we go through approximately 1,000 of these so-called single-use, I think that wording was taken out, but, you know, the plastic bags that are in question on a monthly basis. Recently, we're the beneficiary of a nice donation of some reusable bags, but it amounts to about enough to last us three weeks, which is great, but for only about three weeks. So, I've been informally indicated that a proposed ban would, the Salvation Army and food pantries like ours may be exempt from, however, in my cursory reading of the proposed ordinance, it doesn't seem that way to me. Also, even if we were to be exempted, banning the bags throughout the other retail establishments in the city would dry up our supply source where we don't buy bags, they're given to us by people that shop at local places like Market Baskin and whatnot, and they make sure that we can recycle them by giving them to people that visit our food pantry. So, perhaps somebody was already aware of this, but it's just another impact that this proposed ban may have on our community and some of the most vulnerable residents of our community at that. So, thank you.
Paul O'Brien.
I'm just waiting through about 120-page document from another coastal community across the Atlantic Ocean from England about sustainable plastic bagging. And in its report, it says that the paper bag and the polypropylene bag, which accounts for 75 percent of the non-one-use bags, are far more damaging to the environment than the single quote-unquote "single-use" plastic bags. So, what I'm basically hearing from the city council is we'd rather look good than be good. It was brought up in the subcommittee by a city councilor that he understood that this ordinance was majority primarily symbolic. It's not how legislation is supposed to come into law. It's not. It has also made reference to our support group, which I'm assuming means Citizens for Sustainable Bagging. And at present, on a social media site, there are 44 members strong with approximately 25 percent of the members not residing in Newburyport. Yesterday, we celebrated Memorial Day. If you step out into the hallway, you'll see the sons and daughters of Newburyport who fought for an ideal of democracy for the residents that we all live in Newburyport now. If we want to symbolize something, let's symbolize that ideal, not something that is a cheap PR or marketing campaign.
Judy Avery, 54 Milk Street, Newburyport. My name is before you as possible member of our local cultural council, and I think I could bring something unique to this. I was a former parent and staff member at the Brown School, very active on the cultural arts committee, so we brought various performers, artists, musicians, scientists, mathematicians into school to enhance school programming, and in that capacity, I was also a successful applicant for the school to local and mass cultural council, so I hope you will consider me for this position. Thank you.
My name is Steve Rusick. I am a relatively new member to an organization called PAVO.
Your address, please.
Seabrook, New Hampshire, sir. And this past April, we organized a walk to raise money for the support of American veterans, mostly homeless American veterans. Unfortunately, that weekend, it was a cold, rainy Sunday, April day, and although we did okay in terms of breaking even and so forth, we really need to raise some funds for the veterans, so we're proposing that we kind of copy, cut, and paste that same format that we used in April and do it again this coming October 4th. I have additional detailed information I can submit to the council as well as police, if you like, but it is essentially the same walk that was previously approved this past April.
Dan Wright.
Thank you. I'm Dr. Dan Ick. I have a business called Dr. Dan's Natural Healing at 171 High Street. I'm here to ask you to reconsider the use of fluoride in water. I see many patients who I feel fluoride is toxic to them. It's been in the news that 40 percent of our children have an excess of fluoride in the water. When we start prescribing medications like Flovent or Prozac, we're giving fluoride that's in those medications. This is the only form of mass medication is in our water, and I think this needs to be individualized for the physician to take care of that on an individual basis so that we can deal with it person-to-person versus a mass form of medication. It's the only thing in the water that deals with medicine. The CDC, the Oral Health Unit of the CDC, says that it's useful topically, but not systemically. It's found in many tissues. I find it affecting many thyroid and endocrine organs, and this is becoming more and more of an issue, which I see in my practice, so I'm asking you to reconsider, and there are others here who are going to speak more to that. But 97 percent of the countries in Europe do not use fluoride. Japan does not use it. The World Health Organization says that there are equal number of cavities in fluoridated countries versus those that are non-fluoridated. All you have to do is look at yourself and your family and say, who has cavities and who doesn't? I grew up with fluoridated water, and I got plenty of cavities, so I ask you to reconsider this, and there are others who are going to address this as well. Thank you.
Bill Patnott.
My name is Bill Patnott. I'm from the Florida Mass and with the FluorideAlert.org, and I'm here to save your money. The situation is, when you put fluoride in the water, 99 percent of the fluoride that you put in the water goes down your toilet, your shower, you do your laundry, you do your dishes, you water your car, you do... 1 percent of the water that comes into your house you ingest, $8,400 of fluoride that goes into your system, 1 percent of that is $8,400, is $8,400. When you drink it, it becomes systemic. $8.40 is what reaches your teeth. It's a waste of money. Not only that, it's corrosive. And Massachusetts has to raise $21.4 billion in 20 years to do their water systems over again. And part of that reason is because fluoride is corrosive. It sets up an environment of electroconductivity, bimetal corrosion. You've got copper, you've got brass, and you've got steel, and it takes the iron oxide off the steel, softens it, and you've got leaks. It's a waste of money. It's corrosive. You do not need it in your water. Topically is how you should use it. We gave these out, it's also used to make the atomic bomb, uranium hexafluoride. C616 was the code word for uranium hexafluoride. It made people drowsy, lethargic, affected nervous system. It's also used in a laser with heavy water. Fluoride is the most reactive chemical in periodic charge by fire. You don't need to ingest it. It's terrible. Thank you very much.
Chris Martell.
My name's Chris Martell. I live at 22 Greenwood Street in Amesbury, Mass, and I'm here to talk about the possibility of Newburyport looking into removing fluoride from their water. My background is, I had met Bill Patnott a number of years ago, and ironically, after two years of Bill educating me on the detrimental effects of fluoride, it turned out that the Amesbury Board of Health decided that they were going to put a ballot question in the November election of 2011 to let the residents of Amesbury decide whether they wanted to continue to fluoridate the water or not. The fluoridation had actually been stopped. They were having a lot of problems with the sodium fluoride, which is very different than pharmaceutical-grade fluoride. It's actually a toxin. It's not a medicine. There's a skull and crossbones on the bags that they put into our water supplies, not in our X symbol. And the guys at the Amesbury Water Treatment Plant, the stuff wasn't dissolving, they had it tested, nobody could tell them what it was, and they said, we're not putting it in. As a result, the DPW director went to the Board of Health, and they ceased the fluoridation. Fortunately, the Board of Health, I give them credit, said we're going to let the residents decide. That's how they had decided 35 or 40 years ago. Amesbury defeated it in all six districts, and the three main points that we made was, number one, fluoride is a toxin, and it's not fluoride, it's sodium fluoride. If you look at a picture of the bag of the stuff that Amesbury used here in Newburyport, it doesn't look anything like a medicine. Matter of fact, an industrial waste product is not a medicine. Secondly, it was freedom of choice. If you're automatically fluoridating the water, those that may be adversely affected or those that don't want to ingest the chemical don't have an opportunity to rid it unless they do everything with bottled water. And then lastly, it is definitively unethical and immoral to make somebody ingest something against their will. So, you know, my hope tonight is that this will open a dialogue to look into the fluoridation of the water supply here in Newburyport. I was a resident myself for a while. My mother is still a resident, and I have plenty of friends that are here as well. Everybody would benefit from its removal. Thank you.
Spencer McNeil. Ethan Zanbagna.
Good evening. Hello, I'm Jim Zanafania, pharmacist who has lived in Newburyport for 40 years. I have sent you an email with the material I'm presenting, and I've actually just handed the clerk a hard copy. Of all the scientific evidence you need to prove that fluoride is in all ways deleterious to our health, I have five bullet points if you have read this material that I'd like you to just consider, and you may ask questions at the end of this. The NIH and the CDC recognize that fluoride is not effective in drinking water. The EPA itself states that it is, there is no recommended daily allowance for fluoride. It is classified as a toxin and a poison. Pages 2 through 4 in this, which I've given you, will show you how the scientific gold standard peer-reviewed evidence that the scientists time and again produce the same results. There are only harmful effects attributed to this drug, and it really, even the current chief of the EPA has publicly decried the use of fluoride. That's the chief of EPA. Harvard study just recently has conclusive evidence of a 14-point deficit amongst children IQ testing in fluoridated communities, and a sixfold increase in bone cancer amongst men under 20 years of age. Also, dental fluorosis, if you know what that is, it's on page 6. It's a visible sign of systemic toxicity, and it is now present, now, in 41 percent of our adolescents. Number four, more people are fluoridated in the USA than the rest of the world combined. 97 percent of Europe is not fluoridated. Israeli court, after hearing the scientific evidence, has recently banned its use. And Ireland is now placing it on the ballot. It's pretty interesting, isn't it? Number five, it is illegal to force any individual to take any drug without their consent. And so, let's honor the freedom of choice, and let's correct a wrong. Let's do what is right for the citizens of Newburyport. And considering the increasing evidence and current national groundswell of concern about information revealing the deleterious effects of fluoride on the health of Newburyport's citizens, we ask our city council to invoke the precautionary principle, it's listed here so you can follow it, and follow the lead of our progressive neighbors' communities, Amesbury and Methuen, and immediately remove fluoride from our municipal water supply to protect and defend all of Newburyport's citizens, visitors, animals, and our entire ecosystem. And I want to thank you for taking this time to consider this.
Thank you. Andrew Tecter.
Hi, I'm Andrew Tecter from Boxford, Massachusetts. I spent a considerable amount of time trying to put together something called Health Round House, where we're working on health issues, and we selected fluoride as the first issue that we would deal with. And I am a research crazy guy. I started doing my research, and the more I delved into it, the more it scared the living daylights out of me. Because fluoride in the water is one thing, but fluoride in our food, fluoride in our pharmaceuticals, fluoride is everywhere. It's in the air, and to be honest with you, none of that fluoride is absorbable in the sense that we can use it in our body. The only one that really is usable is calcium fluoride, and it's not the one that's usable. We ingest sodium fluoride, and all that free fluoride very simply ends up migrating to your body, causing dental fluorosis, causing skeletal fluorosis. I have a packet for you here. What really got me in the end was Jim Zanbagna has an uncle named Dr. Phil Zanbagna, and he passed away, I don't know how many years ago, but he wrote a wonderful book in 1974 named Fluoridation and Truth Decay. Dr. Phil Zanbagna was not your ordinary doctor. He served the army, received the Accommodation Medal. He worked for 10 pharmaceutical companies. He basically is an allergist. He was also past president of the International Society of Fluoride Research. In the end, he finally made the moral decision to basically stand up. He was ostracized for it against fluoridation. And that is a record. He wrote a great book. I've given you information on that and his CV, and you will see it is quite impressive. I've also included other information from other books in here for you to look at, including one from Dr. Jarvis from Folk Medicine in Vermont, and it's a world-renowned book. And one of the things he talks about is how fluoride, bromine, chlorine displace iodine. And today, on Channel 7 News, they're talking about women who are pregnant who have an issue with iodine. With this much fluoride in the environment, very simply, it is almost impossible for the thyroid to absorb iodine. You cannot survive without iodine. Rockefeller proved this in 1922, and it's still valid today. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Marilyn Wire.
Marilyn Wire.
I am a resident of Cambridge, and I'm here to talk against fluoride. This is not necessarily a town issue, it is a national issue, and it is also quite personal to me. And in the 21st century, I'm amazed that we're still talking about this issue. The first memory of fluoride fight was as a child when we had civic meetings in our living room in Wellesley in 1967, and Dr. Zanbagna was in our living room, hello. And my parents were adamantly anti-chemical in the public water supply, a substance that was imposed on the entire population for the benefit of a few without knowing or controlling the dosage, let alone having public consent. We all had good teeth, we had organic vegetable garden, good genes, good hygiene, so why would we need this medicine solely intended to change the body? Most of the medicated water would end up washing the street, flushing toilets, making beer, and it would be a waste anyway. But according to our next-door neighbor, Dr. Frederick J. Stare, we were uninformed, obsessive, fear-mongering, crazy, and as health food advocates and opponents, we were charlatans on national television and in newspaper column, his newspaper column. Dr. Stare was a leading advocate and a master promoter of fluoride for 50 years. He was a hired gun for the sugar industry, testifying before congressional committees, and lectured on behalf of the Sugar Association, promoting processed cereals, ice cream, potato chips, cookies, and soft drinks as, quote, "nutritional snacks." Coke was good for you. This was given credence by his stature as the founder of the Harvard University Department of Nutrition. The lobbyists got what they wanted, someone with credentials to do their bidding, promote both sugar and the means to protect decay, against decay. That's really sweet. They poured millions of dollars his way. He convinced the Food and Nutrition Board to list fluoride as a nutrient, something widely debunked today. It is not a vitamin or vital to our biological system. He wrote papers advocating for the elderly's use of fluoride to strengthen bones, a notion adamantly challenged in light of osteoporosis, arthritis, kidney, penal gland, and immune system studies today. He coined, if not perpetuated, that it was one of the greatest advance of public health of all times, that its ingestion was beneficial to bones and teeth, right through the 1990s. Fluoride was never approved for ingestion by FDA, nor has it ever been subjected to rigid, the rigorous...
The time's up. The time's up. Thank you. Thank you. Dan Dorrie.
Sir.
Dan Dorrie here.
Darren, I'm the Delta Echo Romeo at Dover River, sir. Am I addressing the chair or the city council?
City council.
And Mr. Jones, you look as slick as a gumdrop. I must admit, I came by to, I left my card with you to assure you that I'm a friendly. Where to begin? I think this, what, I have two minutes, sir?
Yes.
This entire meeting is an example of the effect whereby advocates for a certain position, be it legitimate, considered, or absolutely insane, show up to lobby in favor of that position, and you're a common, ordinary citizen who isn't even aware that things are going on, or is absolutely indifferent, or is, you know, looking at the bread and circuses of the NFL or whatever, does not show up to speak against these things. I noted that so-called healthcare professionals who are here tonight to speak against fluoridation, and that reminds me of the joke about what do you call the person who graduates in the bottom of their class in the absolute worst medical school in the country? Do you know the answer to that?
Doctor.
Doctor, absolutely. So, I'm very, very, give me, I had very, very short notice on this tonight, so give me five minutes. I'm educated.
No.
No, no, I didn't ask, I didn't ask for five minutes now. Five minutes from...
Get to the issue.
Absolutely.
Forward against it, let's move on.
It's absolutely settled science. Children in the United States used to have dental care carries out of all proportion. With all due respect, what has been quoted here tonight is what's commonly called junko-science, absolutely nothing that's peer-reviewed, some anecdotal things, causality is not, pardon me, correlation is not causality, and I think you need to look very, very carefully at what's going on here and the lunacy that's being purported as fact, and/or indeed scientific fact. I'll close with one last anecdote. Niels Bohr of Nobel Prize-winning physicist was once on his farm in Scandinavia, and another scientist was visiting, I believe it was, may have been Einstein, asked him why he had his horseshoe above his barn door, the scientist that he was, and Niels Bohr replied was, "Well, it's like evolution or anything else." That's my paraphrasing it. And Niels Bohr replied was, "Well, I understand that it works whether you believe in it or not." So, I'll close on that, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much. PJ Gatter.
I'm a 12-year resident of Newburyport, PJ Gatter, and I reside at 21 Carter Street. I'm speaking out against fluoride. I agree with the other speakers prior to this gentleman, and I really believe that it's ridiculous that we are paying to add a toxic chemical to our water. If people want it, they can get it in toothpaste. We shouldn't all be poisoned by this. I have traveled all over the country, all over the world, and it's always a joy to be able to drink fresh, clean water that isn't fluoridated. We are such an intelligent and affluent and bright community. I can't believe that it's taken us this long. We're way behind in this issue. It's not a necessity for health, and I really feel that it's poisoning us. I'm speaking for many people here who aren't coming up to speak, and friends and family who buy bottled water because they don't want to drink the fluoride. Please, do the right thing. Let's progress. Let's be one of the parts of Massachusetts charging forward, doing what's right for our health. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming up. Want to mayor's comment?
Good evening, President O'Brien, members of the city council. Nice to be back here with you again to give you a brief update on the activities of the city. Again, I'd like to just reinforce what Council President O'Brien mentioned about yesterday's Memorial Day. I think Kevin Hunt did an exemplary job in terms of honoring our veterans who have given their lives for us, and I thank all of you that were there for the ceremonies yesterday. I would also like to acknowledge Richard Banks, who gave the city a very generous gift, bollards in Brown Square with symbols for each of the branches of armed services with hand-casted brass bells, and as the names of all the deceased veterans were read yesterday, we do this tradition every six months now, the bells of the individual armed services or branch of the services that they belong to was rung. And I thank all of the veterans who rang the bells and supported that, and especially Richard Banks, for donating that generous gift to the city. In addition, I also, speaking of armed services, I wanted to mention that on Friday, it was the change of command for District One of the United States Coast Guard, and Admiral Abel, who most of you remember, was here to read our proclamation when we became a designated Coast Guard city, is moving to Juneau, California, Alaska, and Rear Admiral Linda Fagan has assumed command, and I think this is the first female admiral that we've had in District One. It was a wonderful ceremony. Moving on to other topics, I know that you have begun your workshops in review of the FY15 budget. I thank you in advance for your hard work and diligence. It is a very comprehensive document, and certainly give lots of praise to Peter Lombardi and Ethan Manning for... and Ethan Manning for their great work in assembling all of this several hundred-page document for your review. And of course, we are here for any questions and concerns you have throughout the process. I would like to point out the most recent document that he did submit to you at your request regarding what's happening with our negotiations of union contracts, and I'm very, very pleased the direction the city is going, where we are starting to work cooperatively with the unions in terms of reducing the amount of buyback vacation times, you know, thinking about the long-term fiscal health of our city. And I applaud the unions for stepping up and working with us on that. In terms of the school projects, the projects are going very well at Knott Mullen and at Bresnahan. Again, I'm not sure if all of you have had the opportunity to tour particularly the Bresnahan School, but please just contact me, and we'll be happy to make arrangements for you to see where we are with the process. Again, projects are on time and under budget. The one thing that did come up recently was the fact that we have to close the skate park at the Knott Mullen School for seven weeks because of the close proximity of the construction work that will be happening this summer. There was a meeting with the Friends of the Skate Park, the skateboarders, the skate guards last week, and I think we've come up with a, a good interim solution, which will be to make a temporary skate park at the tennis court, so it will sit on the grounds of the Knott Mullen to get us through the summer. And there is a possibility that, based on how the construction schedule goes, that we will be able to keep the skate park open for, on Sundays. So we're still working on that. So Andy Egman is working with the Friends of the Skate Park as well as the skate guards and coming up with some temporary structures that she will cost-share with us and that will be reused, youth services, when they move to the Brown School. School funding projects, again, I just wanted to point out to you one initiative that we're exploring at this point, only exploring, it's by zero waste, which is a pay-as-you-throw program, which helps to decrease our hauling and tipping fees, increases recycling, there'll be a compost component to it, and 132 communities across the Commonwealth are, have instituted this program, and it has the potential to be earmarked and generate approximately $500,000 annually that could be earmarked for the schools, just another option to consider. The zero waste is coming to present before the Energy Advisory Committee and the Volunteer Recycling Committee this Thursday night, and would encourage you to get information about what's going on there. I certainly will, as the process moves forward, keep the city council updated in terms of where we're going with that. Just a couple other really quick updates. On a monthly basis, the mayors and managers of the Merrimack Valley, represents 15 communities, meet on a regular basis and have come together to work on a regional economic development initiative, and one of those is to get the Merrimack Valley Means Business website back up and running. It's a wealth of information, and we'd like to get more commercial and business properties in there and begin to use that on a regular basis. And so we're looking at the cost of being able to do that. As we continue addressing the issues of opioids and heroin addictions, as you know, we've moved through a series of events, starting with conversations with the DA about heroin in November. We've also met with neighborhood groups, particularly over in Ward One, are working on setting up a Citizen Watch. We also had Chris Herron here to talk to the high school kids as well as their parents about addiction, and we had clandestine lab training. Catawba Abulance has trained all of our first responders in caring Narcan, which reverses the, someone with an overdose. And finally, we had last, a week ago, Friday, the hospital hosted a physician's roundtable where we had conversations about our service, services that we're providing in the city for, or in the state for youth with addictions, as well as learning more about prescriptions and prescription drugs. And we are working with the Health Department to establish two other places for needle drop offs, so there'll be more information on that coming. In terms of the waterfront and the NRA, I appreciate the fact that you are vetting Bob Ulrich's appointment that is before you. I think one of the criticisms of the NRA was that they did not have the appropriate expertise on the NRA. Again, was just a criticism that was heard in the community, and I think bringing someone on board with the kind of urban design and background that Bob has will be a real asset as we move forward, and yes, build an expanded park there. Continuing to work with our legislative delegation and hoping to get a meeting with Secretary of A and F, Secretary Shore, to figure out the mechanisms for getting the $5 million allocation that is in the transportation bond bill for our intermodal facility or garage release. So we'll, I'll give you more information as we move forward on that. In addition, we have been meeting with the stakeholders of the Waterfront Trust and the NRA. We have another meeting this week, and really want to move forward on beginning to address the land conveyances that have been identified with the new survey that has been completed, and something that the Waterfront Trust has been pushing for for many, many years, and it's time to get this done. We also had a very comprehensive meeting with the full team from INCO on the 40R development down at the MBTA station, and this process is in the infancy stages, but again, have begun meeting with their team and their architects and looking at that design and the site layout there, and will again be presenting more information to you as this project begins to move forward. Very, very excited to announce that within two weeks, the senior community center RFP will be released. After over 30 years of waiting for this process, for our seniors, it's very exciting that we're all going out to bid, and we'll have a contractor onboard within the next four to six weeks, and we'll be breaking ground on that project probably in September. The other, the NRA parking lots bids went out today. The, obviously, those parking lots are in need of being, having some, a little bit of work done to them. And when we entered to the paid parking program, that's when we did the complete grading and the LIM PAC, and that's what will be done again in the striping, and get those up to speed before the tourist, tourist season starts again. And I talked to you about the, the youth services transfer. We're now at a point at year 10 of that grant for $15,000, and that's an important work that we need to continue doing within our community, especially now with what's going on with the opiate and heroin epidemic that's hitting our country. And finally, the Kelly School and the Brown School RFQ and RFPs are ready to go. So I know you have your order for the Kelly School before you tonight. So unless you have additional questions, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on, consent agenda.
The consent agenda consists this evening of the approval of the minutes for the May 12, 2014 meeting. There are two transfers. There's a youth services substance abuse grant, $15,000, to be transferred to the drug-free community, same amount, that's in for approval. Second transfer is reserved appropriation DPS gas, $23,000, to DPS highway fuel and oil, same amount, that's in for approval. There are three communications. The first is the Patriots for Americans Veterans Organization, Walk for Our Troops, October 4, 2014, to be referred to Public Safety Committee. The next communication, a letter from Dr. Daniel Iink, MD, regarding water fluoridation, that is removed at the request of Counselor Hershaw. Communication number three, Orange Leaf Frozen Yogurt use at Market Square, June 28, 2014, that's to be referred to Public Safety. There are two first reading of appointments. The first is Judy Avery, 54 Milk Street, to the Cultural Council until June 1, 2017. Next is a reappointment. Katie Gildner, 7 Broad Street, Unit 2, the Mosley Woods Commission until January 1, 2017, and that with communication number two out is the consent agenda.
What's taking you out? Counselor Connell?
Item three in communications, the Orange Leaf.
Anything else? Mr. Wilson, the council?
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Consent agenda passes as amended. Communication two.
Communication two is a letter from Dr. Iink to the city council. Would you like me to read a portion of it, all of it?
No, that's okay. We've heard enough of the public comment.
Okay. I move to refer to Public Utilities Committee.
Second.
Discussion? Counselor Hershaw?
Thank you, Mr. President. The background behind this letter is, this is a letter that Dan Iink sent to the city council in hard copy dated May 1st. We heard his comment earlier tonight, and as you know, Mr. President, we receive many letters and many memos in both printed and electronic format frequently. This is a topic that I've heard about in the past, prior to May 1st, and when I saw that it was a doctor who was a physician in town who was submitting this letter, I figured, hey, you know, let's put it on the agenda. At the time when I read the letter, I was in the clerk's office, the health director, Barbara Easie, was standing next to me, talked to her, I talked to him about this, the content, what his thoughts were, and he had no objection to it going before the city council, at least formally on the agenda. I recognize, Mr. President, that water fluoridation is under the jurisdiction of the Board of Health. But at the same time, I feel that the city council is a better body for policy direction. I don't know what the answer is. I don't know if the answer is to maintain the fluoride levels at the 1.0 milliliters per liter that it currently is. I don't know if it's to reduce it to an amount that the EPA suggests. I don't know if it's to remove it, period, if that's what the will of the voters. But I feel, Mr. President, that it should be perhaps the Public Utilities Committee, I don't know what other committee, if not neighborhoods and city services, to potentially talk about it. And then maybe the council meets with the Board of Health, maybe not, but I feel like it's a worthwhile conversation to have, based upon the testimony we heard tonight, and I know of others in the community who feel in both directions. So that's my intent for sending it to committee.
Anything else? Counselor Connell?
I'll try to be brief. I, I think that the cart's a little bit before the horse. In fact, something that has such an intimate impact on health ought to start with the Board of Health. And if they make a recommendation, then as the policymaking entity, the political body, then perhaps the council might act on it. And frankly, I think if the Board of Health made a recommendation, it ought to first go to the Water and Sewer Commissions, who are implementing the recommendations of the Board of Health in order to stay compliant with the rules and regulations to protect public health around the water system and the sewer system. So I, I think there are a couple of steps that, that make much more sense before something like this comes before us. So I would object sending it to a committee unless the intention is to forward it to the Board of Health, the Water and Sewer Commission, and, or the Joint Water and Sewer Commission, and hence to the city council.
Any further discussion? All in favor referring to Public Utilities? All in favor? Look at roll call. Motion to refer to Public Utilities, Counselor Vogel.
Aye.
Counselor Cameron.
Aye.
Counselor Connell.
Nay.
Counselor Cronin.
Yes.
Counselor Agman.
Yes.
Counselor Jenta.
Yes.
Counselor Hissard.
Yes.
Counselor Kinsey.
Yes.
Counselor Tanta.
Yes.
Counselor President O'Brien.
No.
Two no's, motion passes. Communication three.
Motion to approve.
Second. Can you read it, please?
Sure. Dear city council, I'm writing for approval to host Newburyport Brewing Company outside of our business, June 28, 2014, for three to four hours in the afternoon. We are hosting our second birthday party for our store, Orange Leaf Frozen Yogurt, and have invited them to come sample their special batch of root beer for the afternoon. This is a big family day here and brings, brings lots of business to the city. I'll follow any accordances and permits necessary. Thank you for your consideration. Courtney Gray, general manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. We briefly discussed this in public safety tonight in general terms, and basically, this doesn't impact traffic. It's something that goes on down at the Bull Nose for many, many different events. So I think we can just perhaps forego the formality and just approve it tonight.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Point at second reading.
Andrew Casson, 240 Merrimack Street, to the Harbor Commission until May 31, 2017, and James Knapp, 24 Cutting Drive, to the Harbor Commission, May 1, 2017.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call. Counselor Vogel.
Point of order, these are for both of them? Yes.
I'm assuming I read both. Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Cronin.
Yes.
Counselor Agman.
Yes.
Counselor Jenta.
Yes.
Counselor Hershaw.
Yes.
Counselor Kinsey.
Yes.
Counselor Tanta.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
Move on to orders.
Order number one. City council appropriates our reserves from the Community Preservation Act FY 2015, estimated revenues in accordance with Chapter 44B, the following projects, based upon the CPC Committee's recommendation, to spend a total of $800,000. Each project listed below shall be considered a separate appropriation. Open space reserves, $50,000. YWCA roof, $54,000. Val Val Church restoration, $15,000. Clipper City Rail Trail, $115,000. Down payment assistance, $75,000. Votable Housing Trust, $220,000. End Street Fountain, $50,000. Green Street Trees, $21,000. FRS Steeple Restoration, $200,000. Separately, NHS Exteria Woodwork, $100,000. Akers &amp; Common Tree Restoration, $15,000. City Hall Debt, $189,000, $187,000. Open Space Debt, $119,818,000. Administrative Costs, $12,000. Submitted, Counselor Charles Tanta.
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion? Counselor Tanta?
President. I think the Community Preservation Committee, as always, has done a spectacular job in vetting and, and presenting the, the requests before them. They, I have been contacted by, by some of the entities who are recipients, who are anxious during construction season to begin construction, and, and I think Mike Deset is here or was here to answer any-
Counselor.
There you are. Thank you. Answer any questions you might have, but, but I, I think that this has been well done, and I think we should approve it tonight so we can get going on.
Counselor Vogel?
Just a point of order that Counsel Agman would like. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor?
I don't want to be the fly in the ointment, but I, I'm not in favor of this being approved tonight. I mean, I, I've chaired Budget and Finance several years when we brought this forward, and usually it gets referred either to Budget and Finance and Planning and Development. I certainly appreciate it. I mean, we generally just pretty much go right along with what the CPC recommendation is, but I think it's a big chunk of, big chunk of money. If, you know, and if I had known, you know, that this might be approved tonight, I'd certainly do a little more research than I did. I, I just think there's, there's usually not a rush. We've been a lot later in this process than we have, and I, you know, I'm sure the mayor's director of policy and administration could, could fill us in. Last year, I don't think we passed this till, definitely it was August or later, so I don't think there's that much of a rush. So I vote not to, not to approve, but to put it to committee instead.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Motion to approve. Order one. Counselor Vogel.
Just a point of order. If, if we vote no, are we, this is on referring it to committee? That's the only thing we're-
No, this is on to approve.
Motion is to approve. No, second.
So if we vote no- So if we vote no, we're voting against the CP... I move to table. I second the motion.
Take the president's.
Roll call.
This is now a motion to table, order number one. Counselor Vogel.
Pardon my ignorance, I need a little bit of clarification as to what the tabling does, please.
Table.
Till next meeting. That's all. It just moves on.
Must come off the table next meeting.
No more discussion?
I...
Take the roll call, please.
Could...
It's on the table, they second it. Let's move on. Take the roll call.
It's, Counselor Vogel.
To table, no.
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Cronin.
Yes.
Counselor Agaman is recused. Counselor Jenta.
Yes.
Counselor Hisard.
Yes.
Counselor Kinsey.
Yes.
Counselor Tanta.
No.
Counselor O'Brien.
No.
Let me cheat for a second here.
Need a calculator?
Simple majority vote, table.
Yes.
Which, which we have. Six. It is tabled.
Which will give us all time to read very thoroughly, and I'm sure we could...
Let's move on.
Move it on.
No side marks, please.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Order two.
City Council of the City of Newburyport accepts with gratitude the gift in the amount of $1,772 from Port Paint and Paper to 101 Merrimack Street from Benjamin Moore's Main Street Matters Program. In accordance with said program, these funds will be used to revitalize a community facility. Submitted, Robert J. Cronin.
Motion approved.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
Thanks, Jack.
Order three.
Order three is similar to what I've read before. It is a replacement order that came in from Office of Planning.
Motion to refer to Planning and Development.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Move on to ordinances.
Ordinance one. Section 13179 Handicap Parking. Add Waterfront Trust First Space on the northwesterly side of the Waterfront Trust parking lot upon entry from Merrimack Street. Submitted, Counselor Robert J. Cronin.
Motion to refer to Public Safety.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Ordinance two.
Ordinance two has in front of it a letter from Andrew Ahport, Director of Planning, to the City Council that summarizes the proposed zoning amendments. The ordinance itself is multi, multi-pages, submitted by Counselor Agaman. It talks about permitting for medical marijuana treatment centers, the harbor master facility use and dimensional requirements, minor amendment to the FEMA MAP, minor amendment to the downtown overlay district, so-called DOD, and minor amendment to demo control overlay district, ECOAT. Recommendation, the Office of Planning and Development recommends the City Council forward these zoning amendments to the Council's Committee on Planning and Development and to the Planning Board forthwith with the required joint public hearing on the proposed amendments, where a more detailed review and discussion will take place.
Motion to refer to Planning and Development and Planning Board as a joint hearing.
Point of order, Mr. President.
Yes.
Is this on the, is this motion on the memo or this motion on all the ordinances in the memo?
All the ordinances in the memo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
That would be all the ordinances.
Need a second? Yes, second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Ordinance three.
Ordinance three is zoning amendment, the zoning ordinance be amended pursuant to Section 12B Adoption Amendment by adding the following, it's a table of use regulations relative to the municipal harbor facility, and also Section VE List of allowable uses with respect to the Harbor Master Facility 713, and again with respect to the same facility dimensional controls, a table with, I suspect, changes. It is submitted jointly by Councilors Connell, Cronin, and Cameron.
Point of order, Mr. President. My understanding, per my last question, we've just moved this to committee, so my understanding is most of the things, ordinances number three, four, five, and six have already been sent to committee.
For the last...
If I could, Mr. President, I think I added to the confusion. The memo actually refers to ordinances two, three, four, five, so maybe the motion should have been collectively. I'm sorry, I took it individually. So at this point, two is there. I think we need a collective motion for three, four, and five.
So move collectively for three, four, and five.
Thank you. Second.
Good catch, Aaron.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
Thank you.
Move on to ordinance six, then.
So what happens to the...
Seven.
Seven?
Seven.
Did I, did I?
There's seven.
I did not approve, no. Seven. There is no seven.
Pending publication.
It's, it's the one we talked about, First Lieutenant.
That's, that's only on the agenda because we didn't want to lose it. It's pending publication, it's not ready for primetime. But again, I apologize. Is it possible to apologize twice in the same, is it? I left off six. Included three, four, and five. I really did prepare, that's the sad part.
Okay, we'll take six.
Okay.
So move.
So move.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
Wonderful.
Remove the committee items, then.
After the clerk frustrates himself to the hand.
Budget and Finance.
Move to remove item number three, free cash, $255,170.80.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
President, Budget and Finance did me...
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
And then now the clerk will read it.
Budget and Finance...
Clerk's got to read it.
Sorry, do we not vote on?
Just for the moment.
Let me dig myself out of the hole. Free cash transfer, $255,170.80. Transfer two, multiple C attached, same amount. Said memo not present. Still in the hole.
Oh, man. This is very confusing.
Do you have the list of the projects? We don't have the list of it here.
Does anyone have that list?
Oh, yes. Yes. Go ahead.
Terrific. Let me go over them briefly. IT, schools, electronic requisition, PO, and content management system. $39,820. Parks, Knockmole and Baseball Field, preliminary design, $4,950. Schools, schools, excuse me, defibrillators, $4,870. DPS, Highland Cemetery Granite Post, $13,204.8. Fire, fire station, alerting PA system and logging recorder, $36,246. Police, reflective jackets, $13,500. Library, carpet replacement, $16,700. DPS, street sweeper, $67,000. DPS, Virginia Lane tree planting, $8,880. Second column.
Okay.
I think it's the same, it just refers to the balance.
Counselor Tanta.
The, the last column does refer to the balance.
Thank you.
Mr. President, Budget and Finance did review and met with actually the fire chief, you know, Peter, Ethan, and we went through each of these. A number of them are listed in the CIP, and so the council has seen them in the past, and some of them are not. The committee unanimously voted to approve.
Any further discussion? Counselor Connell.
Unless I missed it, I'd like to make a friendly amendment on the defibrillators, and that dollar figure is... Is...
$9,740.
$9,740.
Need a second for that friendly amendment?
Second.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Further discussion? I think it must be the fluoride, I'm not sure. Counselor.
Thank you. Just, just a quick reason for the defibs, there was supposed to be a matching state grant that we did not get, and so we have to bear the entire cost. It's still $9,700 to save a life is, in my opinion, short money.
Just a clarification of that, if I may ask, Counselor Cronin. Was that a categorical grant or was that a competitive grant that we were denied? Do you know? Or perhaps, Mr. Lombardi could answer.
It was free money, if you love, like that term, from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security. They had a finite amount of money. People had them on speed dial, apparently we didn't. You know, so that's...
They ran out of money.
They ran out of money.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could direct a question to whoever is best qualified to answer it. Relative to the electronic purchase order system, I'd like to commend, first of all, the mayor and the finance team for bringing, bringing the city into the 21st century. Just a quick question, I know in the recent, in the past few years, we have upgraded the city's IT system, and the initial, the initial budget requisition number was later subsequently added to because the original number was unknown, or things happened and we needed to add more money. I guess my only question is, this approximate $39,000, $40,000 amount for the electronic purchase order system, do you anticipate any additional costs, or is this just a one-time flat fee?
So the module on UNIS, we have the electronic and electronic purchase order system and REC module, but this cost is essentially a one-time cost to implement the workflows and trainings to get it rolling. The ongoing operating costs, all that will be added is, I believe, $2,500 on an annual basis.
Thank you.
Further discussion? All in favor as amended?
Aye.
Both? Anything else coming up?
Move to remove item number four, free cash, $238,241 to snow and ice.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Counselor Tanta.
Bad winter. This is in line both with previous years. We generally tend to under-budget in snow and ice. It's the one category which the state allows the city to spend over budget if necessary. We were also presented information from other communities that have also gone over budget, actually in some cases much higher relatively than us, so the committee voted to approve.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Anything else?
Motion to remove item number five, which $471,000 to school expenses, fire overtime, and DPS, streetlights, and a small amount for the retirement appropriation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
Most... Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Counselor Tanta.
You know, again, the committee...
We're having a meeting here, please. Could you, please keep it down back there, thank you.
The, the, we spent some time examining the school budget. As I think most of you know, that largely because of some of the unexpected expenses in the special ed and transportation, but also in meals a little bit, the school budget was approximately $800,000 plus in deficit this year. And that, that deficit has been addressed, in part the council, you know, approved that some of the state funds be allocated early, about $170,000. The school department itself froze a number of categories of spending and was able to allocate that to the deficit. And so the remaining deficit in the school budget is $250,000. And the committee did, did approve that transfer. In addition, you might, might want to look at the fire overtime, which has sometimes been an issue in the past. We did discuss that with the chief. And again, it is in line, it was fully anticipated. The category was underfunded in the budget last year, and it's necessary, you know, given sick leaves, injuries, and vacation time. The alternative, which is not much of an alternative, would be to hire more firefighters, and that actually would be significantly more expensive, and perhaps not desirable.
Streetlights. Is there any discussion on streetlights?
Streetlights.
From one of the concern of mine, I'm trying to get one for five months, haven't gotten it yet.
I believe that the agreement with National Grid is not yet complete, if that's... But we anticipate, anticipate it to be, and this allocation will be able to finish that, that project.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Anything else?
Move to remove item six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
Yes. Mr. President, just a point of clarification, I have an item number five. Do we have an item six that's missing from my packet?
They're misnumbered.
Yeah, it's just a different number.
It's all a waste fee.
Thank you.
$21,588.7 to Health Department. Saturday injury, the second quad made up. $21,588.7, what I have. Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you very much. General Government.
Motion to remove, sorry. Item one. The interminable...
Animal Control Services. Thank you. Motion to remove.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Go ahead.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Counselor Vogel.
Thank you, Mr. President. The General Government Committee meant, I had forwarded a number of questions over to the mayor's office, mostly around, if you will, the costs. I focused in on the costs, and the fact that they, Newbury was giving us a car... and the fact that they, Newbury was giving us a car with only 10,000 miles of it on it, that had such an age on it, I was kind of questioning that. So, in the discussion, learned that indeed the vehicle has that low mileage, and we will be maintaining it, this is a tremendous savings to our community, as well as to West Newbury, it's very efficient, we'd like to include some more communities as we get around to it. I was also handed an interesting health department monthly report summary, that, I don't know, would make great reading of the number of dogs checked, and so on and so forth, we have it here if you'd like to see it. In any event, the committee voted to approve, and if you have any questions, certainly we can answer that, thank you.
Justin?
Motion to approve the intermunicipal agreement renewal with West Newbury for Animal Control Services, Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Iguiman?
Yes.
Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Hirsag?
Yes.
Counselor Kinsey?
Yes.
Counselor Tantar?
Yes.
Counselor Bryan?
Yes.
Joint Education?
Thank you, Mr. President, nothing to report except the fact we had a council of the whole and a joint ed meeting last week, it was, I would say, I'd call it a working meeting, it was a pretty successful meeting, thank you to a lot of the councilors who were able to attend, we're still waiting on a date for the joint ed, budget and finance, council of the whole, so that will be coming forth at some point soon, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. License and permits. Neighborhood City Services?
Nothing at this time.
Planning and Development?
Motion to remove the item, excuse me, here, item number two from committee, which was, the revised one was referred to committee earlier tonight.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Thank you, Mr. President, Planning and Development met earlier this evening as a committee of the whole, and this is regarding the disposition of the Kelly School, and we had met, this was originally sent to council on April 15th, we had one meeting about it, there've been several revisions made with the input of councilors and with the planning director, Andy Port, but basically, this would give us assurance that the council would be able to, to take a look at the RFR to, before that went out, and also, there's some enhancements around the historic preservation of the facades there as well, so what you see before you should be dated May 19th, and we did approve that three to zero in committee earlier this evening.
Any further discussion?
This is to approve the most recent May 19th order with respect to Kelly School. Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Iguiman?
Yes.
Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Hirsag?
Yes.
Counselor Kinsey?
Yes.
Counselor Tantar?
Yes.
Counselor Bryan?
Yes.
Anything else coming up?
Nothing at this time.
I think you should take five out, you didn't, there's nothing going tonight, take it out, and take a motion to table it, put it back in, to cover our rules, my suggestion.
Okay, motion to remove item number five?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
Motion to table?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Thank you.
Thank you.
Public Safety?
Yes, Mr. President, motion to remove item one, Gypsy Lane.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both, go ahead.
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
Counselor Cronin?
There's no action the council can take, so I will be bringing this to the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee, and staff can look at this, it's a traffic complaint.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Anything else?
Item number two, all women, one lucky guy, half marathon.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Counselor Cronin?
Two quick points on this, this is a repeat event in, in the community, and it is primarily run out of town, it's just getting out of town and coming back in that affects us, public safety voted three to nothing to approve, with the caveat that special care be given to parking in the area of the high school, because that has been a topic of concern.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Anything else?
That, that is all.
Thank you. Public Utilities?
Yes, Mr. President, just a announcement that the Public Utilities has a posted meeting to review the stormwater permitting status update, this is scheduled for Thursday, June 5 at 6:00 PM, right here in this room, it'll precede a budget hearing with DPS.
Thank you, anything else?
No, not at this time.
Rules Committee?
Nothing to report.
Good of the auto. Take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
Jesus.